But then I'm gonna hand it to you to keep in our records.
With this?
Uh, to keep in our records for the village meeting today.
Okay.
And the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's not filed with that, but it's just...
And this would be an ordinance to make hate?
No, it's a, it's a corrective ordinance.
Corrective ordinance.
Ordinance to make hate from 1976.
So, she signs up the test and then she's signing down her first bill?
Yeah.
Which is good.
Oh, yeah, Bill.
And then on the opposite. That's all signed on it, right?
Yeah, and everybody, yeah, we have everybody sign there too.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Bill. How's Bill?
Very good.
Hello. She may open up and just take another trip in a moment. I'll just leave it there and you sit here, okay? This one on the key, 'cause I highlighted that. You coming with? Thank you, sir. Bonnie is not gonna be here tonight?
No.
Okay.
I think she said she had none. Angela, do you wanna keep one of these for Bonnie in case she asks for it at the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, with this, I'm doing all these, right? Spreading the rules and all that.
Which one?
With this.
No, you're not doing an emergency, 'cause it's technically not a financial matter. So you're just gonna leave her to me.
You're doing this one from that one?
Yeah. Okay? But we'll still need five.
We'll have six. There'll be six here, so...
Okay.
Rob's coming?
Huh? Yes, Rob is coming, I checked on this.
All right. Which one you gonna say that? This one? Okay, we just won't take this one, okay? Ma'am, what do you wanna eat? Do you wanna, we got the, you want the pork at home, don't you? No, you want a happy meal? Okay, it's not about that McDonald's, we gotta have a happy meal. All right? Maybe they'll have a good price this time.
Where's Stevie? He left. Did he leave?
He's left the building.
Oh, boy.
Did you guys have a call, John?
Two of them.
We followed them back from the grass fire truck.
Oh, one of the guys must've roped us up.
Wow, it's crazy. I think they did it first.
Whoa.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
I went out there, I avoided them.
We followed them all the way.
I was out at the department, can't feel it, listen. What's that?
Thank you.
I'm gonna guess it may have been somebody air moving, like it was air from the grass truck. So air probably roped us by.
The driver has a, his gear on him.
Oh, Mrs. Bill?
Hi. Passenger, air on, see, I don't have a school.
So we're not way off. Not as much as I thought, but...
Hmm?
Did you see my little motor car about fifty-two fifty?
When you need that?
How soon is it gonna arrive?
You need it, like, I'll be in tomorrow. You need it now.
When we do the order, let's say, just hope to get some bourbon by the front, you know, somewhere around two forty.
I can't hear you, I can't see though, and I just saw the squint over there. And some omelets.
You're like, that's what I usually see, squint. You're like, you're glowing in the sunlight behind you.
Well, that's the way it should be. It's angelic, man.
Why is the halo like this, though?
I don't believe that one.
Um, the ordinance, when that goes to the recorder's office, fifty-two fifty is what we got.
Yeah, fifty-two fifty. Fifty's for the auditor, fifty-two for the recorder.
You run it for money.
Twenty-eight for the course page, and then I add up for the other pages.
So we need one check for fifty-two fifty?
Yeah, we can do it with one check, 'cause what I'll do is, is I'll probably give it to the recorder and they'll give me fifty cents to give to the auditor. It's silly to write a check for fifty cents.
So what, what is the check that you're giving out to?
Uh, the Seneca County Recorder's Office. For fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Any need out tonight yet?
Yes, um... Six o'clock, three people here, bye.
No. They'll be here.
Let's look at the fire truck if we can, okay? Not that fast yet. We'll be.
Heard Rob said you'd be here.
Somebody, I think somebody's...
Ah-huh. Ooh, fire, that's right.
I don't have to call you. Well, Scott ain't here yet.
Abandoned building.
Yeah.
So we can see it all over, the weather's good. This icon, huh? Here we go.
There you go.
What am I saying? Huh?
No.
You are? Okay, good. Good with me. Don't tell me we got these papers. Because we can...
Back from Arizona?
Yes, we are.
I just have mine surveyed.
Yeah.
You know what, Grok?
Hundred degrees out there.
I lost six foot up.
You don't have any tan.
It is. There were two.
Oh, yeah.
Original state. The guy that did it, he surveyed, you know, he knows what he's doing.
They could have a nice, um...
He went to the known one in the back.
Swimmin' hole.
And then did the...
That would be like a pretty basic place.
Trump Resort, holy cow.
Well, let me tell you something. They didn't have much security because somebody stole all the wedding money.
I wondered if you had three different serfs.
Are you serious?
That somebody got all the envelope called by.
But what I was after is...
And that had to be a lot.
...things down through there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That was way better than down there.
Around the, around the, one person around the doll, three hundred thirty dollars. Of course, we always go.
Scott said he, Scott said he bought breakfast for three, him and his wife and...
That was a hundred forty.
A hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Jeez.
For three people.
That's a little, I'm glad I didn't go, hell, I went, I'd have had to sell something to get back.
Now you know how the other half live.
Yeah. Yeah, it ain't the way we live.
Did you get a hold of him?
Yeah, he's on his thing.
That's a good idea. Play the crash and run yourself some more, take the ball.
Yeah, well, good.
Oh, we did a cop in here. I would never have think to do that.
Isn't that our duty, so?
Okay. He's not in California either.
We're trying to make a lot of money going around weddings and crashing parties and picking the box.
Probably not.
Cards.
That's sad. How long did it take them to realize that? Somebody took their money?
Uh, I think that night, that night.
So it has to be somebody from...
Well, hell, yes, it has to be somebody that was at the wedding, you know.
Oh, no.
Nice, nice friends we had there, right?
You can walk in there and there's nothing else.
Well, you know, that's happening a lot. It's happened, Meadowbrook over here, it's happened two or three times this past year.
How many people just walk into them?
Yeah, they just walk in and grab the box.
How big was it, Rick?
There was only a hundred and, I forget, a hundred and two, which others did.
So you pretty much know most of the people taking it.
Yeah, yeah. We have pictures of everybody.
Hey, Rick, what would be a good description for that check? Property transfer?
Uh, yeah, Recorder's Office, put it at the County Recorder's Office.
Put what you want to, so you know what it is.
Is Rob coming? Did you say Rob got a new knee, too?
Well, he got, he got something to work, I don't think he must've got a whole new one, or he probably still be...
Well, I get to go tomorrow and maybe have mine put back in play. This is for the, sticking out the side.
Recorder's Office for that, for that...
For that property?
Right, it's never been right since they operated, then.
I did really good the first six months. Griffin was there and, and for the last six months, I haven't, can't bend it.
I took four days off seeing this one, when Tiffen, I won't say his name, but he did the surgery, the first door. Four times, went up there, find me, I walked out. Never really got to speak with him.
I only saw mine once. He says, "See you in a year, see you in a year."
Scott, we're gonna have another one. Rob said he'd be here too, here from Scott right now.
Take a next week to make sure he was in a great place and all that kind of stuff, hope to be in a year. About time. It's usually me that's late.
You're just getting in?
That's good.
Welcome back. We wanted you to take a breakfast.
He could take all of us, it wouldn't be that much.
Probably not.
Or just park the golf course, it'd be a lot cheaper.
Don't have kids last year.
Yeah. Oh, crap. Look, now remember who you're talking to.
I know what I'm saying.
They get older, but they never go away.
I thought it was him, maybe.
Called him, did he say he was coming?
He told me, I talked to him today.
They say it's normal now for him to live with you till they're forty?
Yeah. European style.
Well, we might as well get started then. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Scott?
Yes.
Joyce? Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
Yes. Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rob?
Okay. As we know, this is a special meeting called the Order Now, and, uh, the only things that we can discuss is what's on the agenda. Nothing else can be discussed. So we'll start off with the fire levy. It's gonna be Resolution twenty-fourteen dash eleven. Is that what it is? Go ahead, rule one, or something.
Would you say the number, what's that, Gary?
Twenty-fourteen dash eleven, I believe.
Twenty-fourteen twelve.
Well...
Dan's correct.
All right, Dan's correct.
Twenty-fourteen eleven was, but that was the first one, didn't it?
The fire levy itself, right, okay. Okay, it's a resolution of necessity on a levy for a tax to excess of the ten mil limitation for providing fire protection for the village of Betsville, a renewal tax, and requesting the auditor of Seneca County, Ohio certifications under section fifty-seven oh five dash oh three, or the Ohio Revised Code, and declaring an emergency. Did you say we wasn't?
Uh, this one, we do declare emergency on this one.
Okay.
We don't have a... Headed west, we...
Oh, okay, okay.
Use your telephone. You wanna see mine? Because whereas the village council of the village of Betsville, Ohio, met in regular session on the sixth day of May twenty-fourteen at the village hall, Betsville, Ohio, with the following members present. Well, is that, did we do that on the sixth of May, or do you...
No, uh, this is June right now. So the, you're telling me the first resolution? First resolution was in May, and so we're here for the second one in June.
Okay, okay. So it's fire protection expenses within the village of Betsville, Ohio, a renewal tax. As permitted by section fifty-seven oh five dash, or dot nineteen-one of the Ohio Revised Code, at a proposed rate not exceeding three mils for each one dollar evaluation, which amounts to thirty cents of valuation to be levied for a four-year period of time at the rate in excess of such maximum authorization by section fifty-seven oh five point nineteen of the revised code of Ohio again in tax year twenty-fourteen. First collected in the year twenty-fifteen A.D. For a four-year period of time, which says, said levy is at a rate not exceeding three mils for each one dollar evaluation, which amounts to thirty cents for each one hundred dollars of evaluation, and is at the same rate as that of the levy proposed year under, for the election to be held November fourth, twenty-fourteen.
You don't need to read it all.
We need a motion to... No, we, we are, yes.
I'll make one for the perv.
We need a motion to suspend the rules.
Oh, motion to suspend the rules, first.
Scott? Second?
Steve.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion to declare an emergency?
Bill.
Joyce? Second, anybody?
Bill's second.
I'll second.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion to adopt those precedent files?
Steve.
Bill's second.
Is that Scott?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fourteen twelve is, yeah, I need all you guys to sign this. Up here on the line.
I'm gonna need a beauty.
I need one, you keep an original, I'll take an original with me.
So they need to sign them? Three?
Uh, they, they need to sign one for me and one for you.
How many do you have over there, Gary?
I got two different pages where they all have to sign.
Uh, we need two sets signed.
Okay, there's another one.
Get ready to scramble. Same stat, but I mean, it's a different...
I gave you, or did you give me an original already?
From, you took, from the last one?
I, I...
You took it the last time, correct?
No, that's just one of the top. It's not much more than that.
It's twenty-one.
Okay, you got that one out of the way. Depriving, you wanna talk about the officer's wages then?
Sure. Uh, left a copy for all of you. If you wanna take a second to read it over, or I can go over it.
This is an office of excitement, well, hearing, it's good, huh?
Yes, so...
Three is four, actually.
Yeah, I got one. Yeah, we all kind of been...
I thought Bonnie was gonna be...
She had that meeting, she said she had two more meetings tonight or something.
You can't hear me, we're here for it.
All right, so as you can see, we're not as far off as I originally thought. Um, these are the ones just from Seneca County, but I have spoke to other agencies, Wayne, Rising Sound, and that. They're even a little higher yet than these. But it's all on what, based on experience and things such as that. So we're not as far off as I thought, but we're not as close as I would like to be, I guess. So I would like to consider going somewhere, maybe about a dollar higher at the middle end, and maybe a dollar higher at the top, or, or so. And that'll be based on experience, probation, and yearly evaluations. It's not just gonna be, hey, I think, you know, you're smarter than the other people. There's gonna be some substance to my decision in doing that. I guess, do you, do you feel that this, this, this is enough, or, I mean, I don't wanna go back and redo business, I mean, we gotta make sure that we, we do something for, for competitive, and we can get somebody to, you know... I mean, the numbers speak for themselves, I think we'll be competitive if we, you know, go at least a dollar more than our starting rate, up to nine dollars. And then, I would, I would think up to twelve dollars at the top for people who are, you know, working full-time, you know, that come down to help or things such as that. I think that'll attract them, but I think it'll also help us get good experienced people. Specifically, I want good experienced people to come down and train the new people we're gonna be getting out of the academy that are gonna be our core people to work. So they're not gonna be working as many hours, they're gonna come in simply to help with the training and, and get things kinda squared away. So I don't think we'll incur as much cost as it may seem like, because they won't be working the amount of hours as the lower paid ones will be working.
So you could start off higher than the nine, though, depending on the experience?
Correct, correct. This, this would be have a range, you know, three dollar range, based on experience, and depending on how long they stay, probationary periods, and then evaluations I'm gonna do, just as yearly, but... I probably guess it depends if the train's called, called in, or where he brings them in at, you think, how do you, how do you, how do we represent that?
We're thinking, we let it up to him, but we're, we're probably gonna have to do something with the budget, 'cause there ain't gonna be enough money in there to do something.
Just have to give up car washes.
Yeah, so we do it all.
I don't think you're gonna have to worry about doing anything with the budget per se until we get to that point where, like...
We're getting hired, right?
We gotta have employees to spend it.
This year, I think we're gonna be holding, unfortunately, due to the fact that we had such limited manpower. I think we're gonna have, I wouldn't say extreme amount, but I think we're gonna be good, just for the fact that we're catching up more so. Well, I can tell you, John, see, I think you might want to, in case you're not, I think it's kinda appropriate for next year, I mean, just more we can develop.
Well, even though, 'cause at this point, you have to go to the auditor to reappropriate money anyhow. You may as well wait until you're about done with it, before you have to go to the auditor to ask for it.
And any decision I would make, if it were left up to me, would of course, I would go to the auditor, make sure that we're not gonna put us in financial hardships.
You start at sixty-six.
Based on that.
On the internet, six thirty. Well, it said the ninth, too. Face time.
Well, I think that, so what we need to do, you're making a resolution to do this, or are we just gonna always do this?
What do we have to do, Rick?
We have to make a resolution or something?
Do we have to make a resolution for the, for the increase in the, um...
You wanna pass an ordinance?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we have to do ordinance now. Well, we can't do it.
We don't have an ordinance right now?
No.
Yeah, so we're...
We're discussing it, but...
Yeah, yeah. So I think we'll go ahead and, I mean, we'll put that together and we can do, make it official. I guess, I guess the point being is, do we give him the okay to fight, if he comes and get people coming in now, or definitely move forward?
Well, I would think, we don't, we don't last that long, we're gonna have to.
Are you guys comfortable with the, between nine and twelve dollar, or, I mean, that's just a figure I came up with. If you guys have, I'll take any input you guys have, you know, you guys are back here and you understand the finances more so. Not yet, but I think, yeah, you realize what it was gonna take to get somebody to, we want some quality people, we just, you know, you know, some other issues. Other issues, you know what I'm saying, so... And that's, that's my concern, and that's honestly why no one's been hired yet, 'cause I, I'm the type of person that's not gonna hire somebody just to hire them. There's gotta be some thought, and, you know, is it gonna get us in trouble, is it someone I'm gonna have to... So I'm, I'm okay with giving the flexibility as far as you kinda clear out what that, that rating needs to be to get the person that you need. I think, you know, I mean, we have the upper range, if you, if you think twelve is enough for thirteens, or whatever, I'm just saying, just make sure that you got, so that you're not coming back trying to readjust again, so... And that's kinda why I brought to you what you guys think would be, I, I was, I guess, sparing in this, but I think you guys understand the finance a lot better than I do of the village, and what we could, could do.
What would the hours be?
I don't know.
Say you hire somebody, I mean, are you looking twenty, thirty, forty hours a week?
I would basically figure out eight, pretty much an average of who I have at their current pay rate, minus, from the, uh, line of the budget that includes the salaries, and kinda develop as many hours as we can get out of it, so... I think that's something we can really, really do with the budget, I mean, cause we right now, we can't ever think of making this up, 'cause we don't really understand where we're at, or who we have, how the law is, and what rate is, and then we have to adjust the hours, whatever, you know. I do have three people currently who are planning to apply and come over and help, and then once the academy's out, I know that I have one or two that have been coming over, so... And that's why I wanna get the experienced people to come over and, and train the...
Are they planning on staying, or just...
I think more so, they'll probably do, uh, maybe one or two days a week, maybe for a good amount of time, but I think in the beginning, my main concern is getting them to train the people that'll work for four hours, so, which will obviously be at the lower rates.
So, probably, we should probably make a motion that we're giving the okay to...
Well, I'll make a motion to, to give them the tentative flexibility to get, start putting things together, and then we gotta put official ordinance together, then, I guess.
What's Rick'll do, that and have it at the next council meeting?
Next, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we do, 'cause we gotta, we gotta get this kinda shorted up.
Oh, sure.
We got issues here in town, where, you know, for some, I mean, you can't stop stupid people, but at least you can try to curb it, curb it a little bit, maybe, you know, so... Are you guys comfortable with the...
Nine to twelve, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, right now.
For right now, I think so.
Would you make a motion for Scott?
To give him the flexibility to go ahead and start hiring people until we get this, the official ordinance?
With, with the new pay rate of nine dollars to twelve dollars?
Nine to twelve dollars. Cause I mean, it's gonna take him probably a couple weeks to try to get somebody lined up anyhow, and start going through that process, by ten, to the next meeting, we should make it totally everything official, then. Does anybody have any reservations on that?
That happens.
So the law's bank, risk, court, then, official, people working, something.
I just need an ordinance.
Why are you going for an ordinance for that? We're giving the, uh, flexibility to, when you hire somebody, between nine and twelve dollars.
Plowing him in hand, we can get him up.
You want, I have one of these.
Also, I'm...
Is everybody staying the same right now then?
Well, until...
Until the ordinance is passed, I would, I would say so. Um, there's only myself and Melissa, I'm comfortable with staying where I'm at.
Oh, so is this then the flexibility, not just when they're hired, but after they're hired, to increase them whenever?
Yes.
Oh, about ten to twelve?
Based on, based on evaluations, experience and...
By?
Who?
What's that?
Okay, Scott made the motion.
Well, I think he, he's asking about who, I'm gonna say...
By who?
I didn't have to buy Brandon.
By Brandon alone? By the chief alone? It's his decision alone?
I, I will, I will confirm with the auditor, the...
We have to have, probably have a technical balance, right, so we probably, we need to bring him to the council and have the council agreement as, as, that's probably right.
He'll tell them and then, then we'll get approved through ourselves.
And, and when I do make that decision, I can bring, uh, you substance to say, I mean, this is why I made this decision, this is their qualifications, this is their usual...
That's what we want, but why not, so.
That'll work.
I'm bringing counsel for approval.
Correct.
Yeah.
Do we need a second?
Well, yeah, well, Steve, you...
Matt?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
I did deal with it, Brandon.
Thank you.
Now you gotta get busy.
Okay, the next thing on agenda is the beer garden for July fourth. Eric, did you talk to anybody or get anything going on at the beer garden?
I did not get any answers. Uh, we're gonna guess that they probably wouldn't be too interested.
Okay, our next fall back is Saturday morning, the Sons of the American Legion is interested in doing it. They have the five oh three per thing, so they can get the liquor license, or the beer license, and that, and they're, they have to have their meeting Saturday, the bulletin. But he said he didn't see a whole lot of problem with that. I think it's a good fundraiser.
Okay.
I mean, they're gonna make some money. Okay, next, uh, we're going to bring up this ordinance nineteen seventy-six dash five. It was back, it's on Bernie Emmons's property, it's right beside my house, um, back in seventy-six. The council vacated the alley.
I'm just wondering if we're able to discuss that, it wasn't on the announcement of the post office?
Yes, it was.
Was it?
There is.
Yeah, you should've went back up after six and took a picture.
You mean there was one and then you changed it into another one?
Well, we had to make sure that we could do it, 'cause we had Rick on the phone and he had to get with her lawyer and that, see if we could get it in here, so. Uh, but back to this ordinance, it was where we vacated an alley at their property. It was in front of their house. Okay, it was the one that went in front of their house, across the ditch, behind all these other houses on town.
There's a bridge there, right?
Yeah, well...
Yours back.
Yours back, it was, yeah. So, and we had to, we found the ordinance, thought it was okay, but then the tax map office seen it down here on the section one of the original one. It says from the west lot line of, lot two sixty-three eastward to the east lot line of two sixty-two, that should've been reversed. Should've been west lot line of lot two sixty-two eastward to lot line, uh, two sixty-three, they just had those two numbers backwards. And they caught it at the tap ma, tax map office. So what we have to do is, uh, we have to make a corrective ordinance to unrecorded ordinance number nineteen seventy-six dash five to vacate a certain alley immediately south of lots number two sixty-two and two sixty-three in the village of Betsville, Ohio. Whereas it is the desire and intention of the administration and the council of the village of Betsville, Ohio, to correct the clerical error in ordinance number nineteen seventy-six dash five and record the same end. Whereas the council of the village of Betsville has elected by a vote of three-fourths of its members to dispense with the requirement of section seven thirty-one dash point seventeen of the Ohio revised code that this ordinance be read three separate days prior to its passage, and now therefore be ordained by the council of the village of Betsville, Ohio. Section one, that the following described alley be vacated, being that alley immediately south of the lots number two sixty-two and two sixty-three, which lie north of the dedicated right of way of the whole acre drive in parallel with Thompson Street, which is really, Thomas now, right, isn't it? Yeah, and running from the west lot line of lot two sixty-two eastward to the east lot line of two sixty-three. Section two, all other provisions or ordinance number nineteen seventy-six dash five are hereby reaffirmed and incorporated as attached here too. Section three, this alley is vacated to the current abiding property owner Bernice A. Emmons as of this date, June tenth, twenty fourteen. That by a vote of no fewer than three-quarters of its members of the council of the village of Betsville has dispensed with the requirement of section seven thirty-one point seventeen of the Ohio revised code that this ordinance be read on three separate days prior to its passage. And section five, this ordinance shall be in effect thirty days from the date of passage and is due authentication by the mayor and the clerk of the village of Betsville, Ohio. It'll be ordinance number what?
Twenty fourteen thirteen.
Twenty fourteen dash thirteen. Okay, so what we did, actually did was, we corrected this one, and then when we take this up there and the old ordinance, we're gonna record the old ordinance and the corrected copies, so that Bernie, she's, she has a house sold, she just needed this to get it done, so. It would be the right thing to do, you know, otherwise, half, the front half of the house was in the alley. So they did this back in seventy-six, and, and so this is just to straighten things out, so she's got a clear sale on to do this. And we have a letter from...
Tom, I have him write a letter to, uh, protect us making this the request, and so it's on file.
We have that on file, so.
And I'm giving that to Angela now.
Okay.
Do you have a big motion?
Yeah, we need, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, he'll make a motion, we'll both make a motion. Rob makes Rob's second then.
Rob, you gonna second it?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
I see that.
Matt?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion to declare, I don't know what I'm gonna say, motion to adopt this agreement, if I...
I will.
I'll second.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that's done. Next thing I have on agenda is, and the final one is the park forms. I thought at the regular council meeting that we said we didn't wanna put it on the internet and download the forms and so forth and so on. And I see that there are on there to download, on Stan's website. And it was brought up at the last council meeting, and we said no, and it still was done. All we wanna know is, when we say something that you know that they don't want, and you go ahead and do it, you cannot take things in your own hands and do it.
If, if we did decide that last time, I didn't do it, um, to go against your wishes, I didn't realize that we made that decision.
Yes, the decision was made.
Did we vote on it or something, or, I guess I'll go back and watch the video, I don't remember, I see you talking that much about it.
Well, we brought it up because we said, it's gonna just cause more double booking, because like shelter houses and so forth, they download the form, send a check in for seventy-five dollars, and then somebody's already got the, got the shelter house already rented and they send a check back for them. Same way with anything.
I thought that was, that's Brittany's job herself, right? It's Brittany's job to...
Yeah, pretty much, to take a handle of that part of stuff, yeah.
So we don't wanna make it easy for the residents?
I didn't say that, I was saying, we're, this is the way we want, we wanted to stay the way we're doing it, and it wasn't, it wasn't okay, and you did it just to do it. And then you made the comment on there about, this is when you got somebody to do it for this one lessons, and then, you said, see, this is the way it happens, John DeBrun. We don't really appreciate the negative text stuff.
That wasn't a public comment, that was to two specific people, that they shared it, that they shared it with...
Well, it was on the internet, well, I mean, we...
Doesn't matter, it's on the internet regardless.
It wasn't on the internet, it was a text message to two specific people, they shared it beyond them.
And this is all I'm gonna say about this, is I don't understand why that was consumer service, when all you played was little man and handed them a message that should've come to them in the first place.
Whatever, I'm about done with this crap. I'll take the, uh, forms off the site, that's not a problem, if that's what everybody wants, from right on my mirror, and two people say that's what they want, or three.
What's council saying?
Well, my, my opinion is right now, we got, we got the, the town website, and that's, that's, that's the official website, that's the one we're gonna focus on, the problem is when you get...
We've got so many people in there, nobody knows who's where. Which one's the Fisher one, even though you said you're not, not affiliated with the, with the town thing on that, but you are, because you're on the council.
I mean, the issue really comes down to, I mean, I, I realize that, you know, the, the office is only open a short period of time, but like I said, majority of that stuff we're doing in the parks, we did help through Brittany, I think we just start, try, try to make it as simple as we can without confusing everything. I mean, I, I understand Stan's point, but the issue comes down to, we don't have any way to manage that, we don't have a big organization to manage the website and all that stuff, and then it just creates more confusion. So I mean, if we were a bigger entity, then I can understand how it might work, but we still haven't the resources to do that. You know, I mean, I understand Stan's position, we're trying to set up work in twenty-first century, but in the same program, we don't have the resources to do that with our organization, what, what we have, so that's my only concern.
Alright, I'll take him down, not a problem.
The concern I have, and this relates to those forms, and as much that it was on the, it was on a separate website other than the official Betsville website, is that, and I don't know the localities of it, but, uh, I would think that as a body such as this, we would speak publicly with one voice. We make sure that anybody who wants to can come to these meetings and find out firsthand, and, uh, when they state something, uh, such as, oh, a special meeting, what we're gonna discuss, uh, I was on there to smarten, and I did go to the, that site of yours, only because I wanted to see what was going on to something outside of town here, and, uh, I was amazed that, I seen a picture of the, the meeting tonight, which is the reason why I was late, because normally our meetings are at six thirty, okay? And there was a mistake on that, the earlier form, which probably was corrected, it said June ninth, it was June tenth, so I said, oh, they probably threw it together real fast, and it's gonna be six thirty on the tenth. But it also stated that we were gonna talk about officers' wages. Now, I've been on this body long enough that when you have a special meeting and you say officers' wages, something that specific, that's exactly what it means. Officers' wages, doesn't mean what crime he happens to be involved with, doesn't matter what, uh, cruiser he's driving or anything else, it's officers' wages. And I seen a comment, I don't know who wrote it, I didn't see the name, there was a comment that we're having a special meeting, six thirty, and we're gonna be discussing officer, or police issues, and it encouraged everybody in town to come up here and start talking about things that we didn't say we're gonna talk about. And I think that sends a very mixed signal, one, it violates our sunshine laws, because that's not what we stated in a regular meeting that we're gonna do.
And, and I'm, and I'm sorry, Rob, but we're kinda getting on the park forms even.
Yes, we are, and I just wanted to say that, you know, when you get the, the park forms, uh, that's just another thing, and that, along those lines, and, and, and bothers me. And you're right, I did get a lot of apologies.
On that same note, how many times are we allowed to change what we post at the library or the post office about what we are gonna discuss, apparently it was changed once at least?
It was changed once, and that was earlier in the afternoon, and then we, I changed the date in the afternoon, 'cause we just covered it, we had the ninth, Tuesday the ninth, and actually it was ten, so I went around, everything that we hung up before the twenty-four hour notification and changed the date, that was the only change. And the only, and the only reason that we changed it, uh, that one there is because we gotta hold a record, we wanted to get this done as soon as we possibly could for Bernie, so that she could get her house sold, and that we didn't have to wait and bring it up at another council meeting and that. So we thought it was well within the wings to go ahead and post it with this stuff and get it done out of the way tonight, and then she's gonna have a clear sale on. That's the only reason it was changed, otherwise it wouldn't have been changed.
Well...
I mean, we just added two, but...
To, to make perfectly clear what I was talking about, with the park forms.
Yeah.
That we, I mean, to me, we speak with one voice, if you wanna come up here and, and learn what's going on, or watch the video, that's, that's fine, okay?
Or look at our website.
Or look at, or look at our website, and see if there's something on there, and if there's something we're not putting on the website, put in a request, we'll put it on the website, like the web, but we'll discuss that at council and we'll approve it. Uh, and that's all there is to it.
Okay, that's all we have, and that's all we can discuss, um, so, we need to make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
And I said, I'll, I'll be there, never mind, I'll be there, that's because I just ate all the six thirty. I'll be there at six thirty.
I'm getting a stamp.
Hey, that's what's happening.
I'd rather be at work.
What'd you do?
It's getting better.
Signed, right?
Yeah, but ten months. Yeah, and she rubbered...
How long was that one saying?
Well, she went to jail. And then she was supposed to go to jail Friday, I don't know what it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be about five years. Yeah, she went to jail, she was supposed to go to jail for like five years, she got out like at six o'clock, and we didn't run her, and then turns around and wins a brand new cut on the TV show.
Well...
We should have office gave it the cut.
You see the sarcastic truth she got me? You know, six-pack abs coming soon? She's seen it, hey, you gotta get that. I don't have to.
I'm sure the doctor'd be, you wanna come over? I ain't gonna go jumping on that concrete and sit around.
Rubbing.
He's gonna have to sign another paper. He don't, he don't have to sign this one, he wasn't here, that's the one he wasn't here with.
Well, I think he did sign it though, a way, well...
What's happened at other meetings, Gary?
EMS meeting at Liberty Township.
I'm good at leaving that phone at home.
Scott and Steve going out. We can't, we can't make.
No, I know, I know.
Oh, and then we're having, we're meeting with Liberty Township, Jackson and Plaza Township.
That's fine. Have a good time. I'll sit on the porch, I'll bring a beer to play with.
That's kind of trying to get a EMS thing together?
Yeah.
Several later, that's gonna come to a head.
Well, everybody's get, I mean, there's, we're, everybody's meeting. This is more of a discussion meeting, see what we can do. And that, I got Lori, and I got Ken Majors coming, and, and everybody from Liberty Township, and us, and China.
Hey, while you're out there, ask old, what's his face, why he's not mowing the park bed?
I'm gonna ask, I'm bringing, I'll have him mow it, weeds in the ditch in front of the park, yeah.
I was, uh, at work talking to our, the audible mayor of Attica.
Oh, yeah?
And, uh, we got on the subject too, EMS. He got on the subject of EMS. And I tell you what, he takes a dim view of, of Ken Majors and all that.
Really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, they got their ways of doing things. They, they own their own thing, so.
Well, wasn't there a big hullabaloo here a few years ago between Majors and that? The other guy that was ahead?
Probably.
No, 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 it wasn't, no, there was another guy that was ahead of.
Of EMS. Pretty much. Sandusky, Seneca, both, both counties are coming ahead with everything.
My God, and we've had what? The, the siree's been going off all weekend. What the heck's going on?
I'll tell you what, this is, you're in a bad situation.
No, Saturday, first Saturday of every month.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about the fire trucks and EMS. Yeah, and Bascom has been coming, I think, too.
If we had one calling, they had to call Bascom.
Davis fell out. Mexican grandson, you can throw.
Gary, didn't Rick meet up? Or is it that down?
I'll take it to him and ship him tomorrow. Just make it out now. I'll see that he gets it.